Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the fight salute. Shall I read it? Please read the statement of public notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Little Falls Township Planning Board meeting of Thursday, February one, two thousand and twenty-four is called to order. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with New Jersey Statute Sanitated ten colon four dash eight. And New Jersey Statute Sanitated ten colon four dash ten as follows. The notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Copy of the notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald and news on the same day. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. Please note that this meeting is being taped. Therefore, we ask that you speak loud and clear and into the microphones.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Vice Chairman Barry?
Here.
Mr. Caraj?
Here.
Mr. Damiano, Luke Damiano?
Here.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yeah.
Mr. Seber?
Here.
Mr. Poshus?
Here.
Mayor Damiano is excused, my understanding is. Uh, Council President Anthony Scobha?
Excuse.
Is excused. Dr. Ellie Abdi?
Yeah.
Mr. Awade?
Uh, he is excused.
Mr. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Ariema?
Here.
Chairman?
Here.
Also report that, uh, the board planner, Ms. Anne Siobhan is here. The board engineer, Mr. Michael Cobulars is here. Our board engineer and I am here, Mr. Briglio Adoro is the board attorney.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four? Reorganization meeting and regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So it's the motion by Ms. Motion by Ms. Cataldo, second by Mr. Seber. Mr. Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Mr. Poshus?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Ariema?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I'm sorry, minister approved. There are no resolutions. First application is then real estate LLC. They usually put it over here.
Good evening. Stephen Greenberg, parent for the applicants in real estate.
Can hardly, oh, the microphones aren't working. You have to speak loudly tonight. The microphones are not working.
Okay, Stephen Greenberg, the attorney representing Zen Real Estate, the applicant, property seventy-five Harrison Street. Uh, lot eight, block two eight, two one eight, and it's located in industrial zone. The applicant is seeking in addition to the property, which generates a number of variances. And my first witness will be our engineer.
Uh, can you, well, okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Continue.
Well, let me swear him in.
Martin Walker.
One. Mr. Walker, please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony that you're about to give before the sport is going to be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please tell us your name, spell your last name, and give us your business address.
Uh, Mark J. Walker, W A L K R, twenty-one Bowling Green Parkway, Lexington.
Yes.
Yes. Um, so I hold a doctoral degree in civil engineering, more at Eastwood University. A master's degree in environmental engineering, and then D I T. I've been licensed private civil engineering in Jersey for thirty-three years. And I'm a principal in the design group. I have not had the pleasure of testifying in anything.
Are all your licenses up to date?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. You are accepted.
Thank you.
Um, counselor? No, I'm sorry, our counselor. Mr. Briglio Adoro? Can you explain for the citizens attending, uh, how this works that we, uh, hear like the engineer and a question just for the engineer, et cetera?
Of course. So the process that we will follow tonight is the applicant will put on a witness at the conclusion of the witness's testimony. Um, well, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions while the witness is testifying, or once he concludes his testimony, the board could ask questions of the witnesses. Once the board is finished, we will open it up to the public for members of the public to come up and ask questions of that witness. Now, I'm sure Mr. Walker will not be the only witness tonight, so you may have questions for others that may follow. But it's just a situation where, at this point, we're just asking you to ask questions of the witness. At the end of the night, you'll be given an opportunity to make a statement. And we will, we will swear you in. You will be asked your name and to give us your address.
Thank you. Uh, so tonight, we're actually here for bifurcated site plan variance application. So if we are in fact approved, approved, we will have to come back to the full site plan. Uh, we'll have to renotice the public and we'll get into more details, uh, about the plan itself. But tonight, we're here to seek some variances. We have a B variance for height and a C variance for building coverage and building setback. Uh, so just, can we just run through the, uh, the, uh, property as it exists today? So it's block two eighteen lot eight, known as seventy-five Harrison Street. Uh, we're located in a high zone, industrial zone. Uh, we have frontage on Harrison Street, actually has been listed, um, which I marked up as your uh, sheet three of three in your site plan set. And I just highlighted a couple of things. I marked it as A one, uh, with today's date.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
So, uh, looking at the, the property, you could see the yellow area designates the perimeter of the property. Designates the existing building footprint.
If members of the public want to come up so that it's better, you're welcome to.
Maybe that can be oriented a little more. It's can see it, and the board members can see it as well.
Yeah, the end of our table may have to get up.
Thank you.
Your cordensizer.
Um, so actually, the, uh, the, the, the existing is highlighted and then darker painted areas are closed. And I highlighted the, the pavement areas, um, going through the site. Um, Harrison Street, the right away, actually dead ends into our dock. So that's all the frontage we, we have. We don't have a long, uh, road running across the frontage of our property. We just have this little stuff, uh, that, that then to the property and then to the east of our property line is, is Willow Ave. And then east of our property is located in a residential zone. And then the three remaining sites are all developed properties located in the industrial zone. Um, the, uh, the property itself is three acres, which is a hundred and thirty thousand square foot, six hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven square feet, which is three acres. And in the I zone, we're only required to have twenty thousand square feet, so we're like six times bigger than what's, what's required in the zone. Entire site is actually now located in a flood zone. As you may know, in July, the E P passed new regulations that said that all the flood elevations have to come up two feet. Um, so the, uh, flood elevation, uh, is now one forty-two point seven five. And actually, our building floor elevation is existing at one forty-one point five feet. So we're about one point two five feet below the actual flood elevation. So we used to be point seven five feet above, but since they raised the flood.
So you have to go to D E P for approval?
We will, and that's really one of the main reasons why we bifurcated this application, because this is technically a major stormwater project. And so we would have to design full stormwater basin, we have to do net fill calculations. Have to make kind of a substantial application to the D E P. Um, so rather than, uh, spending that money upfront, we would much rather prefer coming to the board and, and working our way through some of these more critical variances before we do that hard engineering file application. Uh, with D E P. Um, so before we jump into the proposal, the, uh, the owner was actually approached by the township to see if they were interested in granting an easement for an aqueduct. Uh, there's apparently, there's a, uh, study that's going on. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. There's a study that's going on to create an aqueduct that would connect the Pac-Man River with the Passaic River. And that would apparently alleviate some flooding in this area. And actually, the Corps of Engineers is working, is currently working on a study, uh, to see how viable that is. So.
I believe you have, uh, something that the public can see showing those yellow lines where the aqueduct will go.
I don't have that, uh, with me tonight.
The aqueduct will be underground, I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an underground.
Will it be on your property at all?
Yes, it will. So it would be, it would be east of our property located just east of our building and running north and south. So.
Can you, can you show that?
Okay. Our architect is putting together, uh, an exhibit.
All right, we'll mark that A two.
Um, so I can just briefly show a few of this on my exhibit, uh, our architect to talk about a little bit more detail. That's the building, uh, just to the east of our building is the location of the aqueduct. And this is the, the Pac-Man River over here, connecting to the same river, um, in the north. That gives a maybe better visual of what's being proposed. So the significance of this, that, uh, there wasn't an original approval that was raided, um, and actually, if you look at the property, it really makes more sense to put an addition on the east side of the building, so we can have more loading and, and access to, uh, the, the roadway system um, on, on the site. Um, so by granting that easement, that pretty much eliminates that potential to expand the building, uh, in that area and take advantage of the, of the pavement and access in and out of the site. So the, uh, the owners agreed to the easement and it's actually forced the addition to, if you will, the back of the building, um, which we have shown on our map. And that, that creates, uh, about a ninety-foot, uh, distance between the residential property line, uh, and the proposed building. Uh, I believe we actually have. And so it's, it's a little less than ninety feet where the existing building meets, and it's a little over ninety feet on the southerly most corner on that, uh, easterly side. Um, so, uh, so this addition, and looking at our access, we have Sindell Road and we have a private roadway that allows access to the site. And then we also have Harrison Street that allows access to the site. Um, so, uh, if you look at this access running through the property, really looks more logical that this would be the front of the building and this would be the rear of the building. But because it's our only frontage is located on the east side, we designated the back property line, uh, as a, as a rear yard and the side where the addition is going as a side yard. And the significance of that is, is the side yard requirement is twenty feet and a rear yard requirement is ten. So we are requesting a variance to be ten feet from this side property line, although it technically appears on the site as though it would be more of a rear yard setback. And again, uh, we have our planner tonight has some really nice aerial photos that show the development pattern in the area. So clearly preserving this ninety feet adjacent to the residential property makes a lot of sense. Plus it allows easement to the aqueduct, which is a community-wide benefit. Um, and then seeking those variance, uh, we'd love to discuss about that, uh, as the application progresses.
Um, Mr. Briglio Adoro?
Yes, sir.
Do they have the authority to just say this is a side yard, this is a front yard, this is the back yard? Where'd that come from? My estimation, the area on the left would be the side yard. Though I'm a little disoriented.
Yeah, that is correct. That's the way we definitely showed on our plan. That's why we're seeking more variance.
Well, you're seeking a variance for distance. You're not seeking a variance for changing the front yard or.
You're not.
You're moving the side yard to the back.
No, I, I think it's for illustrative purposes, you're.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sam.
Well, I'm looking at our definition and a side yard is any boundary of a lot which is not a front lot line or a rear lot line, right? Um, what's a front lot line? Uh, or, or what's, let's go back to what's a rear lot line. The boundary of a lot which is most distant from and is most nearly parallel to the front lot line. So in my, my opinion, I think this, I would interpret that with this more, more as a side yard lot line than a rear lot line, because when you look at the street, that is most parallel, uh, would be, uh, Sindel, although there's a private road that is coming in. It's not a public road, right? Um, Harrison Street runs on it, but it's almost like landlocked, the parcel. So in my opinion, I, I would just consider it more a side lot line. So that's why we never made any comment about the lot line, you know, what their engine, what the plans called it as a side lot line. I'm in agreement. It is a side lot, right?
The backyard is a side yard.
It's not a backyard. It's a side lot. The, the ten-foot setback is, in my opinion, a side lot, right?
Okay. The reason I'm asking these questions and, uh, we may, I, I hate to interrupt your presentation. It's excellent. We have a problem and that there are autos stored in what we would consider a side yard. I'm not sure what that becomes. Have you been to the site?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen any cars?
Yeah.
What side of the building would you call that?
So the cars on our site?
Yeah.
So there, this, this would be, so here's our project, right? That's our only project. So technically, technically, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the rear yard would be opposite of the frontage. Technically.
You're saying the cars are in the rear yard?
So this, this would be the rear yard in here, and this would be inside of it from here.
I, I respectfully, I disagree because first off, the front lot line by our ordinance, if that, that boundary of a lot which is along an existing or dedicated public street or where no public street exists is along a public freeway. Now, it's, if I look at, you know, uh, what I wrote in my review, I interpret that as a, it's really a landlocked parcel. But, um, we have, uh, we have Harrison Street, um, but, butting it. So it's that small fifty-foot frontage. I interpret that more as the lot fronting. That's why I was in agreement that that's a side yard setback. And trying, and from a planning point of view, that, that side yard is adjacent to our public works department, um, as, as well. So.
Right.
I have my interpretation.
But, but this is the right of way, and wouldn't the ordinance state this is the right of way right here?
Correct.
Isn't the rear yard opposite the front yard?
Uh, it is.
So this, that's what we're calling this. This is, this is designated as a rear yard. This is the side yard. This is a side yard.
Okay.
This is the front yard.
I, I completely agree with you.
Okay, we're all saying the same.
With the, uh, things from here, uh, I couldn't see. I thought you were talking about the ten-foot setback as a rear yard.
Right.
So.
Exactly. But, you know, looking at the configuration of the lot and the way the access runs through, you didn't know when you were on a public road or not. You would think, so this would be the front of the building and this would be the back.
Yes.
Right?
And, and that's how I accept it. I'm not really willing to accept your definition. And there's a reason for that. The reason for that is because the side yard, in my opinion, is being occupied by somebody who's renting a lease or VC and, uh, that they have, they're using it to store.
This side yard over here?
No.
Or this though?
Uh, keep going. To the left.
Over, over here.
Well.
That's not for running.
No. All right. Can either the owner or someone tell me where these cars are being stored?
All right, we need to swear.
Okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, can you just come up and swear in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you're about to give before the sport is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please tell us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Joseph Ari, eight sixty-nine Maple Avenue in Glendrup, New Jersey, zero seven four five two. And, uh, I will be talking on behalf.
Yeah, just spell, spell your last name for the record, please.
Ari, A R I.
Are you an attorney?
Uh, no.
Um, what's your relationship? Okay, we're not ready for the architect yet. I'm sorry.
No, I will be talking on behalf of the.
Okay, can you show us where the cars are being stored?
Um, the spy that I can see from the, uh, pictures, they're stored over here.
Is that your property?
Yeah.
Okay, is that visible from the street?
No.
Of course it is.
No.
I'm not talking Harrison Street.
Which street?
I'm talking you access your property from Sindel? You turn, you turn left, you go down? Yeah, no, no, you, you heading towards your building. You're heading towards your building.
Simple.
Yes. That's fine, but that's your access.
Yes.
That's your only access.
Yes.
Okay, so where are the cars stored?
Over here.
Okay, that is visible from this private road.
So, i- if I may interrupt.
Absolutely, Mr. Briglio.
We received a notice on a violation of these cars.
Is there?
And the owner did not know about it. We've sent, I've communicated with the tenant to have them removed. And we're dealing with the tenant outside of this.
Is this a long-term tenant?
No, only for two years, uh, for the time being.
I guess we have different definitions of long-term.
Office, the year is up.
Huh? So there's a year to go. Are these cars, these cars have to move? Where are they gonna go?
We directed them to move it.
But they're not moved.
Well, we didn't, it's only, we gave them thirty days to pursue it to the lease. We gave them thirty days to cure. We're within the thirty days.
What do you think the settlement will be? What do you think they'll do? Either remove or?
Or terminate.
See, my question is move to the backyard, but I'm not even sure where the backyard is now. The backyard would be behind the building.
We hope to respect, uh, this, uh, this was not paid before and this kind of, they were not going to use till like a year ago. When the issue came up in the Harrison Street, the state of public traffic and the traffic congestion and everything, uh, the owner of the property blocked this door and, uh, gave access to this private door of the roadway we find in the, uh, neighboring properties because they believe that they, that there was no private property over here. So right now, seventy-five Harrison access to this property through this private door. And nobody else can enter to this private door very highly, we thought it can be this time.
All right, this is a condition that is unacceptable. The cars.
Well, we've taken, we, the lease did not provide or permit that. So it's a use that was not in the lease. The tenant has been notified and that if they don't rectify it, the lease will be terminated.
Ah, okay.
That's all we can do from a legal point of view.
Okay. Um. Very good. Thank you. Uh, let's continue with the engineer. My apologies.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, with respect to our, um, proposal, um, the addition that we're proposing, this, the whole project is about putting this addition on the building. And the proposed additions nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, uh, square feet. The existing building is thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one square feet. Uh, total when completed, uh, the building will be fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, there is a building coverage requirement, uh, in the I zone of forty percent. Um, when, when, uh, if, if approved, a variance of forty-three point nine percent, uh, would be required. Um, so there are also, as mentioned, um, the, uh, the building height, uh, we have documented as, uh, proposed to be forty feet high, uh, where thirty feet is allowed. Um, and we've also requested a setback variance to the side of the building, I guess.
I'm, I'm sorry. So can you put your laser light back on?
Yeah, right here. This is supposed to be twenty feet because technically it's exotic. The way the definition of the ordinance reads, we're proposing ten feet from that property.
What's behind that?
We're, we're going to have our planner discussing. He's got some really nice exhibits and show what's going on in this, in this area.
Okay, how about the parking? Are you addressing that at all?
Um, we can handle that during the site plan. It, uh, section, if you want to talk about it tonight, you can handle that tonight as well.
It can wait.
Okay. But, uh, yeah, basically, we're showing that we need twenty-five parking spaces and we have twenty-five posts.
I was more interested in the, uh, setback. A set of variance, right? What would that be? Is that now a side yard, side yard, or?
Uh, minimal distance to, uh, residential zone.
No, I know that, but for the parking?
Yeah, yeah, and so it's, uh.
Can you point out where that is?
That is, uh, that's the existing pavement to, uh, residential zone, and I believe it was, uh, all.
I think that actually backs up into the baseball field, the recreation. Rec center?
Right.
Rec Center is not an R one B zone. Or are you considering it, the property to the, uh, north?
Yeah, we're actually, we're showing it as an R one B zone over, based on our.
Recreation Center?
We're showing it as R one B.
I believe it's R one B.
It hasn't been changed?
I don't think so.
Okay, I believe in our mass, new master plan that, that will be a change, but you're not backing up into property, you're backing up into the rec center.
That's correct, we're not expanding the pavement in that area, it's the existing, uh, thing. So that, that is all the testimony I had for this evening. Glad to take any other questions right out. And our architect and our planner be providing additional.
Okay, we're gonna open up for questions for each, uh, uh, speaker, um, as they finish. Okay, are there any questions of the board or the engineer?
I have a question with the, um, max building height of the forty feet variance they're looking for, is that for the full building, or is that just for the?
Uh, the, uh, existing building is twenty-two feet, the proposed addition will be forty feet.
Just for the addition?
Yes, and in the way the building, just for the addition, right, so the existing, the way the building heights measured is average grade to group height. And there'll be some discussing about that, uh, from our architect. So the, the floor elevation is approximately three feet above the grade that surrounds the, uh. So that, that's factored in.
The existing building's gonna remain at the twenty-two feet.
That's correct.
So only the shaded area will be forty feet?
That's correct.
Any other questions of the board?
I'm trying to explain my mistake.
It was. I have a question for our engineer.
Yes.
It seems to be a contradiction of the engineer report, which I interpreted to be forty feet high for the whole building.
That was what we were discussing, I thought part of the application was to raise the existing building, doing the same, forty feet as well.
All right, so do you want to re, try, withdraw, or can we track through?
Yes, I am mistaken, the, the existing building will be raised to match the proposed addition.
Do you have any idea what the purpose of that is?
I do not.
Who can I ask?
You'll get plenty of witnesses to talk about.
Very good, thank you. Um, any other questions aboard before I open up the meeting to the public?
If you go into a little detail about the flood mitigation, uh, solutions that you want to propose, the D E P?
Yep, uh, so, uh, with respect to the D E P, we're subject to net fill calculations, so once the project is constructed, uh, we have to provide the same amount of flood storage on our property as prior to construction. So those, uh, details, calculations will, it will definitely involve fall space, uh, under the addition and removal of material, uh, with flood vents that would allow floodwaters to ever flow underneath the, uh, the fall space. So it's the primary manner of, of mitigating, uh, any bill, uh, from the building within the flood hazard area.
Have you read the engineer's report?
I did not get it in here, the, what we're planning.
You did not?
We did get a, not even four weeks for the.
We're in fire.
The visitors came tonight.
That's what I see.
Um. All right, I have to admit, I have never had that before. And maybe, do you want to take time to review the engineer's report and review the planner's report? Do we have extra copies, or should I give them mine?
You can take one, yeah, okay.
You're welcome. And that's the engineer report, we have a copy of, uh, planner's report. All right, I'll give them my copy of the planner's report, I will leave that back.
Do you have an extra?
And at this time, may I have a motion for recess so that, uh, they can review those documents, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
I have.
Pose. We are recessed. Can't put a time on it, because I'm not sure how much.
Yeah.
I wasn't. My mind's a little bit messy. Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
He just. Four years.
Violation on it, I don't know, violation.
No, it's not the architect, the architect will share. Just the, the structure of that, so go. No. No, but even the addition, they should have showed it next to the, we've already. No.
There. There's like fifty of them here.
Yeah. They are. I haven't done it. But now I'm like.
It's so concentrating on that.
Doesn't have my notes. Yeah.
In the original?
This is the plan?
You gave out an I T city engineer.
Yeah, I don't even know. With you. Shall we clarify that move along? Can you do that? Let's get us back on track. So Rich. Should still open up to the public for engineering. Yeah, let's see what they have to say. Very good. Thank you. Are we ready? Oh, all the meetings back to order. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. The engineer has now read the engineer's report. Any comments?
Yes, so there's two comments on the engineer's report. One is a modification to our key map, which we will make. The second is a discrepancy on the architectural plans, which can be made as well. Just a type of typo area in the in the building site.
So what's correct? Which one's correct?
Thirty eight thousand seventy point is correct.
Thanks.
We also received the planner's report, which we'll have our planner discuss.
Yeah, back. Can we go back to the engineer? Well, go ahead. Finish.
Sure. Well, I was gonna move on to the report, so. Go ahead. Do you have any other?
What report are you moving on to?
The fire department.
Okay, yes, before that, the building site. We don't have an actual measurement. Presently twenty twenty two feet.
Twenty two feet, I believe, is what we have on our plans. Measured by the architect.
Oh, very good. That question.
The fire official presented a report dated January twenty fifth. Is four items in there. As I mentioned, we're going to be coming back to the site plan and we can address those comments. But there is one comment there that I think the board and probably the neighbors want to hear about. And that's a restriction or restricted access to Harris Harrison Ave. The fire official wants us to put a gate up and have that as emergency access only. Property owner has no objections to that, which will eliminate traffic coming off of Harrison. I thought that was significant for that particular report. And then we also have a report or email from the traffic safety officer. Which he definitely have a me a concern about the traffic. But there's been some complaints from residents on Sindel Ave. So we suggested that there be a little bit more of a traffic study done, which we can do. At the site of the things of the application.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Any questions to the board? Any comments for the engineer?
I actually have a question.
No.
As far as the police report. And you're saying it's not an immediate concern if there's already issues going on and you're looking to add in all these loading docks. And additional parking and essentially all this extra square footage, how do you not present that being more as a problem since it already is a problem?
I'm just reading his report. When he says in his report. I do not believe in immediate concern.
You're not commenting on the report. You're just reading it.
Yes.
Any further questions to the board?
Does I do, Chairman. The applicant has agreed that Harrison Avenue would be closed down. But there's three other issues that the fire official brought up. One is that a fire department connection should be provided and then a new fire hydrant. Does the applicant agree to that as well?
Yes, we have no problem doing that and we'll show that on the site plan when we come back.
All right, the meeting has been opened to the public. Any questions, members of the public of the engineer, please approach. Might want to step to the side as we swear.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give before the support is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Kenneth DeRosa, D U R O C A D R.
So Mr. DeRosa, you heard the comments earlier. At this point, we're just looking for questions of.
Exactly.
Yeah, and then you'll be given an opportunity later on to speak.
This is just for the engineer.
Excellent, thanks.
Let's proceed. With right now trucks back up two or three deep down the access road. Waiting to get a space there. Very accommodation being made on the site. For those trucks to not have to sit there and idle outside, might have been window all hours of the day and then.
I'm sure we can accommodate that, you know, we have, we only have three loading docks. You know, both in the back, we have room to set, set other trucks in the back. I think it's probably worth managing everything, managing the site.
Okay, and the second with engineering, it's, it's, the buildings are being fortified against the property line. What accommodations for fire having made there to be able to, being I'm so close to the problem, Richard on the counter.
You're over here.
Yeah, I'm right here. So I'm working, you know, this hedges and that hedges and my, you know, my trees hedging, my house was up. So I just want, you know, make sure the fire department get to get back there and some back access to somewhere further we get being some of the technical fire.
My understanding is the building's being checked with? Yes, the building, the building is going to be sprinkled in, in this area here. So they would have to access from either, they had to gain access around the property. They would access from the parking lot on the sides or neighboring properties, which are, as you'll see in the plan, that's five, their road and the whole.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to the public? Okay, let's continue.
I'll have the applicant's representative continue.
He was, but I, I think we swore him in and then he immediately ran to the map, so I think you need to qualify. I know he said he's an architect, but maybe just get his credentials on the record.
For now, we just.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, he's not testifying as an architect.
Correct.
Okay.
So can you explain the proposed business that the architect, I mean, that the applicant would be having at site?
Yeah, sure. The current owner is a lady that was six two thousand seventeen and it's a paper product and sanitation product company. Such as wipes and alcohol swabs and toilet paper, whatever paper you tend to use. And it's a public use product. Since two thousand twenty, the owner, he applied to purchase this property at seventy five Harrison Street. But because of the pandemic and because of some legal issue with the, with the previous owner, there has been, has been a delayed loading. And the initial purchase was for, for using this property for selling barehousing paper products. And immediately after finding this property, there were some issues with the traffic and we prepared clothes immediately. They responded very fast. And we opened the gate at the private roadway access. Basically, our only access during this purchase agreement was from Harrison Street. But with the survey that we received, we understood that there is a private roadway over there, which was left for years. And this property has been vacant for like fifteen years almost. We had to open those gates and we, we provided access to the property from that private road there. And because of the issue with the purchase agreement. The clothing took some time and it happened in December nineteen two thousand twenty two. And before we purchased this property, being in the, there was a approval for an expansion. And during this contract period, we understood that there is a covert project that was, that was ongoing by our folks of engineers. And in fact, Mr. DiMario informed us about that, so we made our research. We realized that we cannot do that expansion, but we still needed our expansion of this property to use for our paper products storage. And what we came up with was with this plan by limiting the Harrison Street access and keeping the private roadway as our main practice as point. And because we are selling paper products, they are very lightweight products and can be stored upright. The most feasible efficient way is to stack them up. And we would like to raise our building height for that reason. I know it's slightly higher than what's allowed, but the average, part of the flats on our building is all the chain have to be higher than the grade over there. And when we are calculating the building height, we calculate from the grade all the way to the top. Although the useful space only sixteen feet inside, we have twenty two feet height rate now for the orderings. So what we are proposing is to use it in a feasible way for our paper products business. We would like to raise it to forty feet for them, where they can have around thirty feet clearance underneath. And with this business, you will have less traffic, truck traffic. So you would like to keep only five loading docks, which are existing. The previous application had eight loading docks and it was expanding towards the residential site. We totally eliminated that portion. And it shows how we are can't be ongoing project. The yellow line shows where the convert is going to be, it's around forty eight feet wide, I think. But each one is going to be wider than that around like fifty, I think, as far as I remember. So one side of our lot is completely unbuilt. So for us to use this space feasible, in a feasible way, we would like to extend it to the site. Which is helping us build site, which is good. And that's that's pretty much it. And during the pandemic, for us to build this property, we purchased forty seven city area also. Because that was the only way to open up that private roadway. But we were not able to use Harrison Street at that point, you know, it was just a big, big solution for our operations. And I'm sure you, you are aware of some history of the property and and debate that we were using it for a short period of time till the hit was approved. We had a temporary tenant, which the chairman respectfully reminded about the issue. And I know that we took care of it with our lesson and that the problem will be resolved for us.
How many employees do you anticipate?
It's just for barehousing, so yeah, stay around that end.
What are the hours of operation?
Eight to six, but I don't think it will be later than four, let's say, but we would like to keep that's eight to six.
Do the trucks queue up before and after that?
We solve that problem by scheduling the first. So there are no matches, there are no matches.
The gate is always open?
If the gate is, yes, there is open.
And where do the employees park?
Oh. We are, our trans future trans show parking over to your calendar for give it. And we would like to keep it there. We don't have many employees, so.
When you come back for the site plan, you're going to show us the ten feet tall arc of ID and fence?
It's a full site plan.
Imagine you will.
We will provide landscaping properties within the residential area. The residential area offer may happen after building the forward because people are going through construction. So you would like to propose offer from here and you can walk this part into.
How about blocking the view? To what is now the side yard? The property from the houses to the north.
Blocking the view from each house.
Yeah.
These are the eventual powers, one.
Yeah, and, and all the way down. Willow?
Yeah, below area is this one, so we would like to provide a buffer and ceiling from this corner to this corner.
Shouldn't you keep going down? No. Oh, okay, my goal or my thought process is that you're going to have forty feet. It's going to really not going to be very nice to look at if I live in one of those houses without screening. We don't have to resolve that tonight, but something that we're gonna have.
Actually, we will have a nice page over here to sort of something on the residential property.
Forty feet?
Sorry?
Forty feet?
Forty feet by dancing is quite right, I don't know.
No heights.
Oh, the height of the building, okay. So you are asking if we are going to provide like roam education over there.
Have you done any thought process into it? Have you put any thought process into how you might block the view?
You can provide fences.
Well, fences are fine, but you can see through them. Okay, continue.
The only thought that he came up with was the landscape of the new green. With a short pass, like the eight, six feet, eight feet fence. But if you're asking about that tall fence, like a concrete fence.
No, I'm asking about plantings.
Plantings, yeah, we, we will have a nice proper landscape right here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the board? Are you?
Are you? Yeah. Any questions? I have a quick question. The, you said that where the parking spaces would be, that if we do end up granting these variances, you would come back for additional variances because the parking spaces where you propose them would be too close to the, I guess, front yard that it would, you need, I think it's twenty five feet, they'd be eleven and a half feet. Do you have to come back for additional variances at that point?
No, we are not.
No, the parking spaces would be in a spot that you do not need variances?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, so you do. You would come back for additional variants? That's not on.
It's on tonight.
Not on the planet for here that said require minimum front yard setback, building height and building coverage. The only things that are on the list for tonight, so I don't see that.
Yeah, it's bifurcated and typically parking spaces are things associated with the site plan. That's why I didn't talk about it and really my main concern was addressing the needs experience.
Okay, so it is on for tonight as well? Yes, we have a variance for parking setback variant.
Yeah, and okay, is, is it possible then to address the screening and do the field direct setup? Should that take place now or when they come back to the site? I mean, if we're going to do a variance, then we should know that the blocking of the view from the field.
I think that would be information that would assist the board in making a determination whether or not to grant the variance.
Yes, it will. If you don't have that.
That's various, I think, for parking.
Yeah. Your variance is for parking up against the Rex, the field. Correct? Correct?
Five square meters, right?
Yeah. That area, we was like fence and we was like greener vegetation. We don't wanna, we don't, if I'm sitting in the stands at Duvall Field, I wanna cut down on the view I have of this building.
Uh, yeah, as far as I remember, there, there is a tall chain ring fence over there that was built by the sports field contractor. Uh, so on our side, uh, we don't need additional fences, I believe, but we will provide.
We, we, you may not need, we are making it a condition. For approval.
Fencing or landscape?
Both.
Yeah.
So, uh, what?
It might be flexible on the fencing if you think Duvall Field is enough, I haven't gotten to that.
After no better fencing, you're.
See here, see the issue is now we're really getting into a site plan issue and the board has nothing before.
And, but we're being asked to do a proof of variance without knowing that.
The applicant, based on this conversation, maybe the applicant is willing to defer that variance to when they come back for the site.
I think that's a wonderful idea. That's your attorney? Does everybody understand what we're doing?
Yes, there's not enough information, there's not enough information, but we're, we're granting a variance based on maybes and wheres.
Correct, thank you.
Counselor suggested. Handle that.
I can't hear you.
We would defer like counsel suggested and handle that variance with the site.
Okay.
And the appropriate fencing or landscaping. And maybe it's part of.
Any, any further?
Not with this.
I'm sorry?
Not with this one.
It's not your fault, our microphones aren't working, we just have to speak loud tonight. Any questions from the?
Just a question, he's representing the client right now, not as an architect.
Yes.
So I can't ask him any questions about.
No.
Okay.
You have a question, I'm sorry, you did indicate that this is a paper business and you're into paper business and that's what you're asking, because you wanna stack up the, the papers. Um, so the tenant that it's there right now, is that their business? And after they move out, is somebody else is going to continue the same business or is it going to change?
No, the, the property is granted only for a short period of time. Uh, twenty two years and one year is only, only the past. And uh, once we get this approved, we were not expecting this to this, to take this long. Uh, not true, I mean, we started purchasing this property twenty twenty, uh, we started storing the paper over there. But things didn't grow well, so we couldn't build the expansion and there was homework and there was pandemic. Uh, so we had to move our machines to another storage facility. And for just two years so that it's not vacant, uh, we, we lease it to another pro, uh, another contract.
And what is their business, what are they doing in there?
Um, uh, it's, they sell cars to tourists. And there's a temporary storage issue as far as I understood from the chairman and he took care of it already. And the, he will not seem like a share.
Thank you.
Does the tenant have the opportunity to extend his lease?
Um, just two years.
So he can have another two years after this year?
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Uh, no, it will not be extended.
So he doesn't have the opportunity to extend?
Once we get, uh, we get this approved, he will move in, he will, he will do the extension, uh, to be the new problem. For our business.
Any other questions of the board before I open the meeting?
The tenant has no relation to the app.
No, I agree, I just was curious if he had the opportunity to extend his.
No option.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Right.
May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public to ask questions of the architect?
Make a motion to the public.
Second?
Second.
For those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed, meeting is open to the public, anyone wishing to address the board, please approach the podium.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Uh, Drew Julin, I currently live at twelve Sophia Street in Bloomingdale, New Jersey. I'm here at the, on behalf of my mother, Shirley Julin at sixty five Harrison Street in June for health, she could be here tonight. Hopefully the board will let me speak here.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, just spell your last name.
J U H L I N.
And first name begins?
Drew.
Drew, okay, thank you, sir.
Did you say sixty eight Harrison?
Sixty five Harrison.
Sixty five Harrison.
Property.
Very good, thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions, I'll try to keep them prior to our school or as we, as we were going, um. So during the construction, if it's approved, will this stay open?
Of course it is, that's right, we have an extension plus making the basis, we will, we will build the expansion first and we will.
Okay. Forty two feet or forty feet, so additional.
Oh, yeah.
And inside the structure, would there be a second floor or my understanding it's just increased space for storage?
Increase space for storage.
Okay. Um, I had some questions about drainage and, and the flood plan, but clearly, uh, whatever US Corps of Engineers is up to is uh, beyond my capacity, so I'll wait and see what that looks like, but my understanding is that would be completely underground, correct?
Yes.
That exposed, uh, actually.
Around, uh, are you gonna take the grades completely? Uh, I am assuming it's fifteen, fifteen to fifty below grade. We can leave this room, but I don't know how big it's going to be within our.
Yeah, and I would imagine it can go underneath the ball fields, Patterson Avenue, yeah, the meat cutter's wall can dump into, uh, St. River.
Yeah, I would assume that this is the longest one, but I'm looking at this zone here on the treatment.
Yeah, it's currently water does rest in the, the, the right side of your, of your map where there is drainage. Okay, um, what's, what is the, the building zone for currently, what type of industry?
Industrial industry.
And is that a broad statement and, and any industry can go in there?
No, but warehousing is definitely accepted use.
Okay, are there unacceptable uses?
Yes, well, you are, everything else is not acceptable.
I'm sorry.
Um, sans, you have that in your report?
In the report, yeah.
For many uses.
Yes.
Can, can you just tell him what the accepted uses are?
Yeah, uh, warehouse is an accepted use. Um, hold on a second. So warehouses are an accepted use, um, as long as the matter is told therein shall not give, uh, rise to noxious orders or not help otherwise people's latitudes to help safety and welfare of the offends of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so I, I'd be curious to know the, 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 whether it's landscaping, park skate, what that would look like between the, the property and my mother's house? Because if you're going up to forty feet, you, you cannot park unless you put a forty five foot wall. Because you're gonna look up, you're, you're gonna see the building.
You, what type of property or materials which, which you use? Are providing some for that. Uh, well, it will not be completely large, you can find that with our writings, the title, uh, so that you can write it as possible. Uh, as far as I remember, your property is one story, right?
Uh, true.
Uh, okay, I mean, you can, uh, you can plant trees that will, uh, minimum too many things that say, uh, and that will be the height without, uh, the, the, the.
But no hard escape, uh, digging, putting stuff with your, you know, concrete walls.
Uh, I even suggest that we are, you know.
Well, I, I, I would hope not. Okay, um, okay, I want, I want to go back if I may to Harrison Street if I could. Uh, I, I grew up in that house, I, I remember when it's Aveda Industries, uh, I, I, I played in, in, you know, that yard and I remember that trucks could never enter Aveda through Harrison Street. And I, I, I would imagine that was a zoning issue or what have you, trucks would always enter, uh, where you're currently using now. Now, now, but if I would call the Aveda. And, uh, that's my understanding of how it's being done today. My question is, did anything change to allow trucks to enter through Harrison Street and through that neighborhood? Again, I've, I've been out on the falls for a little while, so I'm not sure.
That type of decision would be made by the council?
Yes.
Yeah, so I am unaware.
Oh, oh, oh.
I mean, obviously it's allowed, but I think that would be by the council or not here.
So I believe now off of Patterson Avenue, there's a, uh, there's a sign that says no, no trucks are allowed, that knows it doesn't say.
Right.
Yeah, not a truck. Not, not truckers, so maybe we can follow up on, on that one here, they've confirmed that that has not changed. Ju- just maybe to help you, because I don't believe you have this portion of the report. The fire department is requesting that that, that entrance be blockaded. Keep an electric fence, I can only be opened by emergency services where the fire department. Chief car type entries, like something like that. It's an electronic heat bar to allow them to access to that and that's the only allowable use since a fire. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I wanted, I wanted to thank the tenants for doing that because, you know, early on, you, you had eighteen wheelers idling at all, all times of the night and you're obviously causing obvious, obvious issues and, and that doesn't happen anymore, so we appreciate it. They do, okay. Uh, sorry, I, I don't live in town, but just talk.
We can't have conversations going back and forth.
My other daddy's, it's gotten better.
June, right, no, you, you're addressing the, the applicant's witness or the board, members of the public, you'll be given a chance.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Yeah, those are my questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, any, anyone else wishing to make a comment and ask questions? No one coming forward, close to meeting the public?
Nope.
Sorry.
Um, you know, the, the harvest of operation, he said, they're only there till like six. There's two in the night, they're dropping big roll or something, there's those predators and they're going boom. And, because I walked down there in the night, I hear them, so is that something that's happening now that's going to stop? Or, yeah, they're, that's anyway, yeah, oh, inside, oh, I don't understand, it's a very important. You know, it's a barehousing business. Uh, right, uh, so then it's gonna be just. Um, again, can the rope stretch that? That's it.
We, we don't strike.
Yeah. Okay.
You're clear.
Okay, as long as that's, uh, they, they're going back to the six, uh, because through the night is crazy in the back of the truck step, it's. If you talk to your driver or whatever, it would be much appreciated, because like people said, my, my, on Harrison, we were doing it there. Now they're doing it on Sydney and, and on the access road, they sit there all day and they'll just sit there and hide in the back of three, four. Thank you.
Can't spot. What? Fifteen minutes. Uh, any other questions aboard for the architect? Anyone else from the public, both meetings to the public? You can continue.
Now, planner Alex Doherty.
I'd like to ask, uh, well, let's square the planner in and then I have a question for you and for him.
Please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give before the sport is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your business address.
Alex Dowdery, policy name is D O U G H E R T Y, here in the app, we're done associates at one oh one, Trulawther Avenue, Suite one A of North Springs.
License.
License are good parent, RDP as well as nationally certified ASCP. My education center offers blasting with a master's in city and regional planning, a concentration development redevelopment study certification of public policy. I testify as capacity weekly daily basis, I believe I testified.
I think you have. And therefore you are accepted.
Sir, you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, well, no, my, my question before he begins is I have I have front yards setback, side yards setback, rear yard setbacks, are they based on what?
Based on what?
What is the front of the building, we have now decided that the rear is the side?
No, I, we, we got that decided, so the front of the building is, um, Harrison Street is the frontier.
Okay, so is that what your base variances are based on and is that what your variances are based on?
I'm sorry?
Are your variance based on the front yard facing Harrison Street?
That is correct, oh, and that's as for our ordinance.
That's what?
That is as for our ordinance.
Thank you, very good.
So, uh, you're familiar with the application for testimony? Uh, tell the board what you should have brought.
Certainly, uh, we have our dividend package blown up, of course, we also printed out a few packets, we want to get them out personally. Uh, maybe some of the public, uh, for, I do have eleven by seventeen on a smaller scale, but the exhibit packet prepared tonight.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Going to hand them out?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Harrison Streets.
Yeah.
It's in the front, right, the side side rear, right? And the issue, we shouldn't went that far is because we can't have a side yard, because becomes a side yard. And that would throw the entire. Yes. So.
I think you guys are, uh, giving.
Start, hold, just hold on, just hold on one second, Mr. Greenberg, so why don't we mark this A three? And then Mr. Doggity can, uh, tell us what each, there are three plan sheets and he can tell us what each sheet represents.
Sorry.
I think so, way off.
So sheet, sheet one is, uh, there are no ground, but the property question, outline the yellow here for illustrative purposes, uh, we've demonstrated version proposed addition is to be located, um, for clarity on sheet one. And I think this is kind of what the, uh, in here was, uh, including for the purposes. This patch of grass would be our front yard, which would essentially be the residential rear yard. So it is a little unworked, not to say, but by words that is the front yard, uh, the Harrison porch. Uh, but for orientation purposes of the building when you're on site, getting back to Harrison Street would be, uh, deep off, uh, not, not interesting more, I think, the big confusion was, you know, we kind of see this where there are these roads was on the ground that this would be essentially a very smart, um, the orientation on, on the site. Uh, but by the period definition of the ordinance, um, the residential rear yards, uh, are, are. So it is kind of, uh, kind of confusing, but, you know, if you think here when we were discussing the rear yard setback is permitted to be ten, though it's our side yard, we are asking for ten, uh, so that, that is kind of confusing. Uh, but for the purposes of this, uh, area here, the O demonstrates to the extent the addition. Uh, we'll, we'll put to the next slide. Slide two. Kind of, uh, you know, a little bit further. Behind us is the, um, public doors facility. Where the, the, the side yard was the, uh, body, uh, again, this area, uh, is also zone industrial, there is industrial uses happening back here. Uh, so a lot of the questions happening tonight, uh, the stuff and do directly related to the site plan. I have a good authority, uh, from our team that this entire area will be heavily screened with the biggest year round evergreen, you know. Along the ball field as well, so this entire area will be screened with the biggest pieces through the, by the board when that day comes in front of you, if, if this is approved. Uh, for, uh, confirmation purposes, that ten yard, uh, side yard. Speaking with the, uh, applicant team, you know, there is also consideration to screen that as well for the additional residence further down. Uh, but for purposes of this, uh, this is our public works facility that, um, this would be approaching. Uh, we'll go into the testimony regarding the height variance needed and the purpose of that height and the control of, of any standpoint. The next slide. By three. Kind of, kind of throwing around, come a little bit further down, we can kind of see exactly, but it's, uh, further down. Single, single avenue, but down that right is industrial. Um, the, as we heard, agree with the fire marshal, we're just saying with the rest of it. We feel, uh, given the activity down below is more industrial, um, there is no need for access of Harrison. For the applicant, he also owns the other adjacent property, or he reactivated that private road to access this site. Delete to be, uh, it is appropriate, um, that if you also do it to the site, come on the symbol and not, uh, you know, Harrison, Madison, Jackson, uh, in, in that direction. And typically, zone is industrial and the need for other, uh, facilities to our, our rear. Um, you know, this is the appropriate, this is the established route for machine room and a number of trucks, whether they're flat beds. Or dump trucks, that kind of, uh, you know, vehicles, they, that common feature accessing this site. Uh, but nonetheless, um, this is our Johnny condition. We do have the ball field there, uh, we do have, um, existing conditions there today, where we have three, that pretty much back up. About eleven feet of that baseline, we are going to ask for a variance here tonight, so there is some concern, depending on site plan and orientation. You know, the variance may or may not disappear, it's, I don't think it will, but we're asking for that opportunity related to that ball field. We are going to switch that out, um, then you'll see this during the site plan, this is approved, or that would not be great parking, that would be the employee parking. So from a planning standpoint, I think we, uh, you know, bring this down from a technical standpoint. And again, we'll, we'll shield that dedication as well, but we are going to ask for a parking variance. Uh, like speaking of parking variance, uh, it's an existing condition that is, is today, we're trying to improve that, but the way the site is now, share parking right there. Uh, so, um, I think we have an opportunity here from, uh, the site plan orientation to kind of clear some issues and reorganize it. Uh, but the big, the big variance over here for tonight, um, is that height variance. Uh, we heard great testimony from the, uh, engineer, the community is fully aware that we have a funny issue with the judge. Like all street here is the river, perhaps a little bit north of it. Do you want to lose situations where we find industrial uses? And the most unlikely situation for today, that the river, that the training or that way we need kind of developed before. We have strip rags as, we have probably heard the product here is paper, they want the paper off the ground, flooding product, you know. The height typical in industrial. For whatever the reason is, they, they want the buildings higher for stacking purposes. Uh, I think when you look at this site, I do find it kind of unique that there isn't an impervious coverage. Of ordinance or minimum, there is a building minimum, uh, in this particular case, I think it serves the community as well as the overall, um, you know. Product and the use of the property to allow for a little bit greater height and we will screen that to the greatest extent possible. Uh, but for those flawed buildings, it doesn't really work, uh, giving you a building coverage ordinance that is slightly over. Uh, maybe we'd be asking more relief, we're going to ask for the height, given that there's flooding concerns as well. And proposed over in this drainage from the armpit engineer, you know, we like to bring this in, so a lot of the product off the ground. And it's really for operational efficiencies, uh, when I look at this fighting the height controls, um, and why we have, you know, height. Uh, so adequate light air, open space, you know, not compete on that, given that our side yard setback, uh, is, is pending. Given the existing property here as it is, and the fact it's whole area going industrial, I don't see that that added height of eighteen feet. Uh, with the additional painting, but requiring, we're imposed on any other purposes of the brasso, uh, case which talked about adequate light air, open space and, and public. And you know, well, there, uh, I, I don't see that in beginning on those conditions on industrial site. Now, this was residential, this, I would certainly have some concern from any standpoint. And giving our technical front yard is where the over is going to be, get added to separate. But then we'll have that high screening of education there, I do not need to mask any shadow effects, uh, and, you know, repeat on the, uh, visuals of landmarks or, or areas like the problem there, it's just an industrial side behind there. Uh, when I look at this, I would keep them from that side yard setback. I think the relief, uh, we're asking for, uh, you know, the benefits of that relief, that side yard, the benefits of that height, certainly not leave that human. We have an opportunity to reorganize this site, clean it up, and then, and promote the business, you know, that we've done serve and goes well. Um, from my understanding, this, this product, this paper product, they do more than papers, if you, you know. And my material, you know, swabs and, you know, it's, it's paper product, but, you know, it's a much needed industry, um, the industrial. Zones are totally disappearing, the relocks in their backyard, uh, so given the unique strength of this property, it is still a viable property from a industrial standpoint. Uh, we have an op- uh, opportunity as well to, uh, you know, bring in one tenant that's going to utilize this building and, you know, we've heard. Sat in this summer, we've been ten as well, we have, uh, you know, restrictions and delivery. Uh, we have our, you know, our marching orders as far as what the neighbors' concerns are, and I think we have, uh, a fighting man will have a better idea of how that site will function and flow under the guidance of the six up tonight. Uh, so we do have those, those relief here, um, the relief, we can look at the parking relief here as a C one or C two. A C one being a pre-existing, uh, condition, the parking that we're seeking here would be. Eleven point three feet versus required twenty five.
Let, let me just stop it here, um, I thought we agreed, council represented that they were going to defer that to the site plan. So we're not even proceeding with that tonight.
I, I would like to put it out there, because I believe that's what they're going to be putting on a site plan if this is approved. That the parking variance is that here.
But we're not approving that tonight.
We don't, okay.
Right.
Well, we won't.
We're gonna defer that.
Okay, we'll defer the parking.
That would.
The building coverage, the building coverage, we're at forty three point nine percent, forty is allowed, so it's a slight uptick. I think we have justification, given the flood plain and given the, uh, um, the overall site itself and the constraints on that site. Um, you know, we tried to go up, we don't really want to go too much wider than we need to, but with the addition, there is a slight uptick on, uh, three point nine percent over what's allowed. Um, as a planner, I look at this, the zone does not have an pervy coverage, uh, minimum or maximum, uh, I'm sorry, maximum. Uh, I, I do think on a balancing scale, um, given that the additional three point nine percent would not be detriment, uh, and, and. He rode at the intent of the zone, given the lack of language for the lock coverage. Uh, when I look at the height, I just discussed, we're at forty, the maximum height is thirty. I know there's been some conversations about where you take the measurement from and the topography and the grade elevation. Uh, we are asking for height, um, we do believe if approved on a site plan that we can, uh, mitigate any visual impact on those residents. Um, with appropriate screening, that height is needed for product and overall conditions affiliated with the site. We do not, uh, violate the, the brasso test, we're adequate lighter, open space, and the general welfare of the community, giving our set side yard setback. That we're seeking, uh, ten versus the allowable twenty is adjacent to the public works. Again, another industrial site in industrial zone. Um, with that being said, um, when I look at the positives, the proposal will allow an existing established business to improve its operations at the site. The added height will provide for the proper clear span, um, to a contemporary industrial building, better operational efficiencies. This allows the business to better serve its customers, bring their product off the floor in a flood zone. Due to the flood zone, the added height is better zoning alternative than having a low, uh, line building. Despite the setback in buffer barriers proposed condition, um, uh, is again a budding, the, uh, industrial. This is better organization, we don't want to extend that side yard setback into the rear, approach where the, uh, culvert would be, close addition in that direction. Uh, when I look at the overall, uh, positives here, I think we advanced purposes of municipal land use law, purpose A, promote the general welfare, purpose G, provide for variety uses in appropriate locations. Purpose M, efficient use of land, and purpose I, desirable visual environment, I think we're gonna have an opportunity here to clean up this site, add some greenery, give it a fresh look. Uh, when I look at the negative criteria, I do not believe there's going to be substantial detriment to the public or the zone with this proposed plan. As we've heard, we're going to reorganize the site, clean it up, and put some better constraints on these trucks and the direction they're going. Uh, when I look at this, um, we will not have those trucks accessing that residential street. Uh, when I, when we look at the, the set facts, again, we're fighting another industrial use, an industrial zone. Uh, during the site plans, we hope to provide a better undertone for purpose I, for improved aesthetics with that greenery. Um, o- overall, I think we are eliminating, uh, some, uh, non-conforming conditions versus the, uh, the zone performance for the, uh, we have some zone performance for the front yard being ninety, where the zone allows for it to be twenty five. Uh, we have a rear yard where ten is allowed, and, and we're at that, um, when we look at the, um, overall confined yard, so combined side yard setback. Uh, we're at hundred thirty three point two versus the, uh, forty. Um, so when I look at this overall application, um, I do think we have an opportunity here, uh, from the minimum three yard setback. The existing condition is eight point two, that new exist, uh, condition would be, uh, ten, so we, we are eliminating that. Um, uh, variance as well, that's outlined, uh, in the planner's report in their chart. Um, so we are bringing a non-conformity, uh, into conformance, and I think the relief is justified. I think that we work and look fairly honest application, and look forward to the next phase of the site plan, where we can get into the weeds of things as far as. Site orientation, parking, the screening and so forth, but the areas we're seeking, I think, uh, this, uh, have been justified and approval will be warranted for that.
Okay, any questions to the board?
I have actually two things.
Yes.
Um, being that this was submitted as an exhibit, can we just correct the address?
Sure.
We're not in Patterson.
Certainly, I do apologize.
Um, and also you're saying, you're gonna clean up this area, but this photo was just taken yesterday. And there's a considerable amount of debris around the building now. So why is this happening now, and then if we're gonna expose, if we're gonna approve the proposed addition to move it out? Where is that trash gonna, I mean, it's, it's there, and that's sizable.
So I think when we look at this, you know, uh, at the end of the day, I guess the trash in the back, certainly, there wouldn't be that yard there being closed, um, we're between with vegetation. But the overall condition of the site as the, uh, operations, uh, testified to, we have a troubled tenant, um, that we are trying to resolve. But I think overall, the intent here is to clean the site up.
Is this not the warehouse that's being used for paper now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a different tenant now that's.
No, that, and it's kind of all over the back, from my.
Is, is the warehouse being used for paper now, or is that thing, the building?
From my understanding, there was a couple of different, um, warehousing.
I don't think it's being used for paper now, that's why I'm asking.
I think it's a couple of different things happening there, um, the intent is to move in, build this to expect that would suit a paper use. Get rid of a troubled tenant and the other troubled tenant with the auto, automobiles, um, so hopefully this stuff will not manifest going forward.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the condition it is now, and you're saying to clean it up, why not clean it up now? And then you're actually showing us that it's here now.
Yeah.
Sometimes the aerial drone shots, you know.
Okay, the, Eric, are you finished first?
Okay.
The aerial, all this is showing us building with twenty feet. Twenty two feet, not at forty feet.
Right, we did not, yeah, that's existing height, yeah, we showed the proposed addition.
One of the things we're interested in as far as positive criteria. Is to provide light, air, open space, as you mentioned, promote a desirable visual environment, do you honestly think we're doing?
I think when we look at it, the light air, open space from a planning standpoint, we definitely don't want to. Say a higher apartment complex on a low line residential, the setback with relation to the height, uh, behind us, it's an open public works, another industrial facility. Uh, when we look at the residential, um, over by Harrison, uh, we've adequate distance, uh, to provide adequate screening to where that additional height would not be an issue by. Open air, um, and, uh, you know, cast shadow effects from a desirable visual environment. I think when we screen this, you know, um, we can certainly say it will, it would be more desirable than the conditions that exist today.
If we're, if you look at page ten of our planner's report. Which is a picture. From Willow.
Yes.
Looking at the building at twenty feet? Twenty two feet? You see that?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna double the height of that building, shy a two feet. How do you think you can, how do you think? That is a positive for the.
I think when we look at the purpose of doubling the height, from an industrial standpoint, uh, a tenant in a flood plain, a flood zone and, and the condition there to the warehouse. Try to bring products off the ground, uh, to have that additional height. Uh, this right here, we do have, uh, good distance. Um, you know, we've had, uh, we've remember the resident talking about the height, certain vegetations can grow, I am not a landscape architect. If need be, I, I do, I recommend that we bring one in, but the intent here is to screen this with year round screening, so of vegetation that would be higher than this building. So that we would not see this building.
I just don't see this as a positive impact visually, which is. Your sighting as positive.
I think the building itself is a better visual impact than the public works or just general outside storage in that regards.
That, that's true, but from Willow, they're not seeing. The, uh, D P W site, you're seeing your building.
They're, they're circling off. This is Willow, and this is D P for public works. There's, there's a.
Okay, from the picture I'm looking at on page ten, those houses, there's at least two of them are not seeing the D P W. They are seeing, will be seeing a forty foot building. Any other questions to the board? We just. Let me ask our planner, considering negative effects. You think that criteria has been, uh?
I actually wanted more clarification, um, so are you saying that, you know? That this, uh, building, there is, uh, the height restriction, is it creating a new hardship, is that what you tried to say?
I, I think when we look at it, um, it, it would be, but thirty feet is still higher than what's there today, um, from an industrial standpoint. Um, you know, there is some kind of, uh, block, if you will, if you have a building coverage ordinance, so. Going to go left or right, um, so we're asking to go left, um, but the, the building is pretty.
This is not complying with.
Yeah, we're three point nine percent over, um, I, I did express my concerns, um, you know, with the team, um, as far as that three point nine. I think it's to, you know, square off the building, that, that additional space, um, but the height itself, we can't go left or right, we will be over more on the building coverage. We would be here, you know, asking for more, and again, the height will tend to be over what's required, uh, permitted zone would be. And, um, during, if this were to be approved, the site plan phase, you would see a, a landscape plan that would shield.
The zone already allows.
That you mentioned about, uh, the, um, the ordinance not having an impervious coverage standard, eight hundred percent. But your, uh, building will be actually what's a green space.
Yes.
Right, it's not impervious, and there'd be on that, so, uh, are you saying that? The plan, when we would have the site plan, there'll be some mitigation for that added impervious stuff in.
So I think, um, part of the reason we bifurcated this was because, you know, the engineering that would be involved with the site is extremely, uh, intensive. So we were looking, uh, to go for a bifurcated application in order to improve the site and would have a great deal of engineering involved, uh, and, and concerns. I even, uh, made a comment toward an engineer that, given the size of the building. Really, you know.
And when you say that you need that height, you know, because as you know, uh, it's either undue hardship or why. Uh, this is a better alternative, right? So I think you're going the undue hardship route, if I, if I hear you correctly.
I, I, I would prefer to go the undue hardship, uh, given this is the flood plain, uh, in the flood zone. Uh, but the undue hardship for me, I think, when I look at this is, um, we can't stand left or right, so we have to go left, um, so you have that kind of lock in there, um, I think, you know. Uh I think, you know, going up allows us to put in that vegetation. Um going up allows us to keep a building there versus an outside storage. Uh but I would certainly uh boast to be undue hardship with the new flood regulations. This is a paper facility. Getting paper off the ground and clear water that moves the product. Uh but I I do think when we look at the intent of the uh. The purpose of height and height control. The building itself, it will be a better visual environment than the public works.
The zone, I don't know if you can answer this question, the zone allows for thirty feet.
Correct.
Is possible to operate with thirty feet?
So I think that's what your planner is getting at, the undue hardship because with the the new elevations and and in the flood.
The elevation is two feet.
Right, the elevation, but the products itself, they would like to bring that out for our uh concerns.
About the regulations or the regulations, are they getting water now? Have they ever gotten water up? Where the loading dock?
I I don't have firsthand knowledge of that.
Can you ask your client?
Have you got water up to the loading docks?
That level, I mean, did you exceed by a couple inches by a foot, your flood?
No.
Okay, so my question is, why do we need forty? Well, we can do thirty. I can't hear.
He wants to uh speak on why they need forty instead of thirty.
That okay? Sure.
Uh now, the property is around like hundred and thirty-six feet right now. Uh the ground around the building and the property is at hundred and thirty-nine. Which is like three and a half feet, so hundred and thirty-nine forty-six thirty-two point five. Uh so we are already three feet, three and a half feet higher than the average grade around. Plus, uh and our height, this current building height is twenty-two feet from the average grade below. So we only have around sixteen feet usable space under the structure.
Existing.
Sixteen feet.
Just existing on the twenty-two feet.
Exist. Uh our height is twenty-two feet, but our usable space, usable height inside the building is around sixteen.
Sixteen, one six.
Sixteen, one six. Uh so we would like to raise this height because uh. Sixteen feet is definitely not enough for paper storage. So when we increase it to thirty feet, uh we will have around uh. Uh twenty-four feet of height, which is also very low for paper storage. That's why we would like to raise this to forty. Plus, you may have to build the uh new floor elevation to a half feet higher than the current floor. Which uh reduces our storage capacity also drastically, uh even with the new forty. So if if I get a clear thirty feet height from uh from floor to under the structure. That would be the ideal situation for us.
Why not with that?
Sure, uh when we do it to forty feet height, uh we will have thirty feet clearance. In the structure.
Questions?
Um are are you testifying as an architect or just?
No, just on this.
The this the paper business that you that you operate over, um that was the intended purpose when you purchased the phone, right? Um why did you buy purchased building that was twenty-three feet tall? I couldn't support it.
Uh because there was an only the extension plan approved in two thousand and five with a higher and deeper capacity.
What was the height of that approval?
Uh that was higher than twenty-two feet, but I don't remember uh.
It wasn't forty.
It wasn't forty. It wasn't forty, the previous.
But it had to be above thirty, because otherwise you wouldn't need a variance, right?
Yes, I you wouldn't need a variance. Forty foot would be your idea first.
No, what was the prior approval? You don't know the height? My question is because if it was under thirty feet, that's already allowed, so you wouldn't have had to get a variance.
I I'm looking at the reservation from two thousand and five, I think that was submitted to us. I don't believe there's a high barrier.
I don't think it was a high barrier.
Picked it up to near the a little over forty-seven percent building coverage, because they didn't go for the height, they went for the wraparound, which would now be where the cover was.
Okay.
So they got building coverage instead of building height.
But it's not the height, wasn't it?
So now we're coming and asking for the height, because of the.
Comments, your questions of the board members? May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
So moved second.
All those in favor? All those opposed, meeting is open to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, to ask questions of a planner, please come forward.
Let me swear back.
No, you don't.
Okay, ju- just one question, is the current property technically in a flood zone? It is, yes, okay. No, I'm fully aware, but in fact, mom's property is in the backyard of our tree and she's not legally in the flood zone yet.
Yes, please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
M A N. Fifty-one Harrison Street. So I can say that the the trucks are still an issue coming down.
Can you step forward like to the podium and say?
No problem. The trucks are still an issue for us coming down Harrison Street with this proposed plan. Are we going to do something about maybe an address change so that the trucks are actually going the proper way?
Are you saying that the state might go down Harrison Street?
Yeah, yeah, and like the V O L, truckers have shown us the V O L. And they don't have like any direction of to come around the Cindyl way. So when they're putting in the address seventy-five Harrison Street, GPS takes them down, Harrison. And then we get traffic backing up of them attempting to back up. They're crossing Jackson, which I've seen many times people with hitting them. And that to me is one of my issues with the proposed plan. I'm fully against the raising of the group. I think if it's opened up to the whole township and many other people here. I'm a parent of young kids. I use the Xander all the time for running sports and I think the town did a wonderful job of that. And I think now we're going to have this massive eyesore that I feel like we're going to be living in like cops in our playing life.
We believe the issue of the address is a US postal system issue, which tries we might, we don't think they'll listen to us. Your concern was very good. Perhaps the uh. Owners can somehow convey the to come down Sendo Avenue to delivery trucks, is that possible or?
Do you like to Google uh for uh address showing? Uh I don't know what else we can do. I I don't worry about that exchange.
Well, this was an unforeseen problem. Thank you.
Uh second question about that is if you own the building, it's right in front of the city, can those truckers have that address? With like signage on the side of the building, they recognize the building behind it?
So right now, the property is rented means undercarrying. Uh so we cannot control, I mean, we can hardly tell them to free the trucks from the side.
There is already.
If your mailbox, when your building, this building, that building, out front on the window. That way you can tell people your address and mail and postal, they come down this window, that way you know you're coming here back.
Sure, like the. The buildings. That would work?
Yeah, now if they at least put something on the on the V O L, it would have the, you know, like. Yeah.
You look, you look, thank you of the USPS.
One of my other questions was about the timing of the facility. Right now, we have, we have talked, you know, in discussions that we have talked, I mean, all I was saying, we still do that in talks occasionally. Like say I was sitting outside of a house, like on Harrison Street, and I'm back up the three talks. Here, but we still do that in Harrison. Uh but what is going to be to Alex's operation? Is it going to be like seven days a week, five days a week?
No, we normally work, it's paper business, we work eight to six during uh B days.
So just B days?
Yeah, just B days.
Okay, because right now.
Right now, it's uh yeah, it's our.
That was eight to six, Monday through Friday.
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And I just have one question about the market. And I flip to the other page really quick to.
Absolutely.
So right now, I mean, you have it, you have you have multiple trucks today here. You're proposing, I mean, the warning, they're going to turn on this.
Yes.
So you're opening five holding dock here?
Three.
Right.
There's currently three.
There's pretty currently, but did you claim that three too?
Yes, you're just keeping it.
Okay. I have a question for our planning, because you don't think anything. Because I do agree right now with you, you know, you know, full flood zone, up the front here throughout the whole property. Because my here is really good of flooding, because right now, my house is right here. And I am in this muddy, the houses that aren't in a flood zone. My here is with the property, I'll be taking up this back portion, that's a lot of land that's now not going to be absorbing any of the water that we currently have coming down.
Well, the one good thing is they are required to mitigate any water runoff, it should improve or certainly not increase.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please tell us your name, spell your last name, give us your address.
Okay, Thomas Greff, spelled G R E F. Mid sixteen Jackson Street. Okay, um just a a first statement. The difference between thirty feet and forty feet is huge. Um I know there was some deal that was made in two thousand and five, but. In, you know, the amount, I guess it's square footage that they need. But I, and considering it to me, the biggest thing is, you know, you know, thirty feet is one thing, but you know, another ten feet is big. So that's a major concern, typical area. Um secondly, um just on um on construction, I at the timing of. The flood tunnel, I don't know when that's going to happen, but just on when this, uh if there's any. I wouldn't want there to be a conflict with the way on the on the tunnel project, I mean.
It wouldn't, I'm not the architect or an engineer, it appears to me it wouldn't affect it at all. Can you comment on that, either the engineer or architect? In other words, the tunnel, we specifically, when this was being discussed, asked, well, recommend you, you'll build there because you have to rip it all off.
Well, we are not touching the tunnel area. Now only uh if this interpretation is approved, then we are going to go for a stop site. Then we are going to provide landscaping only in a narrow gap because of the.
Anyone else, I'm I'm sorry, your question? Anyone else want to comment or ask a question? Feel free.
You swear from the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name and give us your address.
Uh Kevin Erigan, B E R R I D A N. Uh fifty-five Harrison Street. My only concern is forty feet, you're talking about covering it up with vegetation. I don't really think, I don't see how that's possible. How are they going to put in forty feet of vegetation? Like I just don't believe that's a possible thing to block out the size of a forty foot building.
We don't disagree.
And then when they put it in, would it be put in at forty feet or would they put in at, you know, ten feet and take twenty years to grow? To cover the building. Well, that's my concern. I don't think there's any way to cover that up. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? You know, one last chance. Now officially close the meeting to the public. Uh Mr. Barry, you have something you want to discuss?
I I have been hearing from the public and from board members that uh the height. Of the proposed building is biggest concern that's been expressed tonight. And uh at the risk of losing the entire application, uh would the developer or applicant consider. A setback of the forty foot height uh on the front facade, setting it back twenty feet.
This would visually reduce the impact.
In other words, keeping the twenty foot high existing facade on the front side facing Willow Street. And set it back twenty feet and then go up to your additional twenty. We keep it at twenty feet, your existing twenty feet. That's what it is now.
Existing heights.
You're only able to use sixteen feet and it's not, for us, it's not a usable space basically. You are going to be using to look in all this uh portion of the building. We can discuss about if it's thirty feet and twenty people said and they.
I'm not sure I understood what you just said.
I I think what he's saying is, the front of where he's pointing, that would be thirty feet, which is permitted by the ordinance.
Yes.
Then he would step it back twenty, twenty feet and then the proposal is to raise the rest of forty.
That cuts ten feet off of the visual. Yeah, we understand the setback, we were looking for twenty, he's proposing thirty. Will that, I'm not sure, I guess it will reduce the visual impact.
If like, as a planner, I can say right now, the setback, the way it is, the building length is at eighty nine feet. So if if it goes twenty feet further, if I understand the architect correctly, that is eighty nine plus twenty additional feet, which is, I think. You know, uh, a substantial like hundred and ten feet.
Exactly, and thirty feet, if that site is allowed by ordinance. So the question is, do you wanna talk and see if that is acceptable to you?
So, so what I'm saying is hundred, um, nine, ten, or whatever that is, it's a better, yeah, it's a better option than eighty nine.
All right, I'm gonna declare us in recess, may I have a motion for recess? May I have a second, all those in favor? All those opposed, we are recess, uh, to the members sitting out here, this is not part of the meeting, do you understand what we're saying? If you take what they call the front of the building, which faces Harrison Street, okay, well, look. They will go up ten feet higher, but not twenty feet, they will set that back twenty percent.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, now what happens then is the visual impact lessens. They, it is allowed by ordinance, in other words, we can't.
I mean, whatever it is, it's gonna, they're gonna put.
No, so what happens. When the setback in time from Willow, in fact, the impact isn't any different of what it is today.
Same thing they did on twenty three, with that four story. Same exact thing.
True.
Because it's, it's, you know.
If you look at, uh, if you ever go on twenty three, and you, you see the buildings that are now mixed use that are going up. Okay, so they're four stories, but you don't notice the fourth, this is setback, so it appears three. That's, that's the fault process, man. The remaining issues that I've heard of.
I know, I know.
Don't be impressed when they come back for things, they have to get D E Ps.
That's if they get Army Corps of Engineer and D E P of the Pro Vols to move forward, they may not, and this might all be moot anyway.
Yeah, that's why it's called a bifurcation, this is just for variants, this is the next one, we don't do many.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hand like. Go ahead, speak loudly.
So, the applicant has thought about it and is willing and happy to, uh, accommodate the board's suggestion.
All right, my suggestion is at this point.
Chair, I think, I think the board would like to see it, u- understanding that the board has suggested it, and the applicant's willing to do it. If we can carry this to the next meeting, show us on a plan what it looks like. And we'd be able to move forward at that point.
We would agree today if the House of the Board gets.
Call the board?
To see that they would agree to this proposal that we would be drafting?
Oh, well, no, that's approving the variants, we can't do that, that would be approving the variants. You wanna know how the board is thinking?
Yes.
No. No, you have to take it on good faith, I mean, remember, we did recommend it.
Yes, okay, so when is the next meeting?
It'll be the first Thursday in March.
March seventh.
March seventh.
Okay, I don't have to notice right?
Now, we'll, we'll care, I'll I'll make the announcement.
Yeah.
No, 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 so. The board's formidable, will carry this to the next meeting of March seventh. There'll be no further notice to the public, because you're here tonight, we're carrying the matter to March seventh. At seven o'clock, so you're here tonight, if you wanna see what happens on March seventh, you should return. There'll be no legal obligation on behalf of the applicant to put notice in the newspaper, or send you the certified letters, that already happened. And, uh, I I believe you've understood what the board has asked the applicant to do. Which is, the applicant is talking about raising. That portion of the building to thirty feet, which is allowed by the ordinance, and then the thirty feet would go back through a distance of twenty feet. And then they would raise the rest of the building up to forty. That's what's under consideration, but as you heard the chairman, the board has not made a determination on that yet. Board wants to see. How it's gonna look.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
And we shall see you on the first Thursday in March, March seventh.
Thank you.
During the old business before the board? New new business, may I have a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.